Good evening, everyone. Tony Gonzalez calling together tonight's planning board meeting for September 3rd, 2025. First, we'll start with roll call, Yolando Spinola.
Here.
Just lost you. Where'd you go? There you are. Matthew Gallagher.
Here.
James Sweeney.
Here.
And Marty Crowell. Well, we lost Marty.
He dropped off for just a second. She's gonna try to log back in.
Okay.
And Marty?
All right, roll call of Marty Crowell.
Hi, Tony.
Hi, President. Okay, and Tony's present. Um, short agenda this evening. We have a site plan review for 4464 staff, a site plan review for 30 Intervale Street and a definitive subdivision for 1036 Ash Street. Okay, we're gonna start off with a motion to accept last month's meeting minutes.
I was to accept last month's minutes. Back in.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty? Marty, um, acceptance of last month's meeting minutes, please? Is there a yes or a no to accept last month's?
You still can't hear us for some reason.
Marty, can you hear us? Marty? Um, so Tony, yes, so those can be accepted, correct, with these votes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Gonna text Marty to let her know she can't hear us or something?
I'm gonna see if I'm gonna message Marty and see if she can just call in.
Not get audio.
Did the invite letters have the, um, the phone number on them?
Yes. Uh, it's on the agenda. Yeah, yeah. Should I call? Should I try and call her? Or do you just wanna move forward?
If you have her number, give her a call.
All right, give me a second.
And while we're waiting, is the applicant DeBarrow's Enterprises or Scott from JK Homegrown Engineering ready?
I will move Scott over. Um, thank you for raising your hand, Scott. I can find you now. From OT panelist. And Scott, who else is on your team?
I think I'm a one-man team, Rob.
One-man show. Okay, that's fun.
I believe so. All right, great, thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Board members. Scott Farrier from Homegrown Engineering. And I have for you tonight a site plan for another accessory dwelling unit. Uh, this one is at 7 Braer Street. Uh, it's a newly constructed home. We went before the Board of Appeals back about a year ago to receive permission to build a home, uh, a single-family home with a, with an attached garage that's on the corner of Forest and Braer Street. ZBA approved, uh, the variance. The home has been constructed. It's almost done. I, I don't know that it's quite 100% done, but it's pretty well done. If you drive by it, it looks like it's finished. And, uh, the owner is looking to turn the basement into an accessory dwelling unit. So it's, uh, we went to two tech review meetings, uh, received some comments from planning regarding the driveway. Uh, received a lot of feedback from, uh, from Bill at building and from Deputy Chief Weeks, uh, about the egress from the basement, uh, ADU out to the garage and ultimately, uh, outside. So we've made the changes that Deputy Chief Weeks and and, uh, and Bill looked for at building and that's what we have you, have for you. So we have a a, uh, a proposed 650 square foot basement accessory dwelling unit. It's, uh, it would be a kitchen, a living room and two bedrooms. So relatively small, but, uh, that's what they're hoping to do here, Madam Chair.
All right, sounds good. Pass through to tech review. Questions from other planning board members?
Madam Chair, if I could.
Awesome.
Uh, so Scott, my concern in, uh, do you have a rendering or, uh, the, not a rendering, but do you have a floor plan? Okay. So my concern is the parking. That's at the end of a one-way street and we approved that, uh, yeah, probably less than a year ago on zoning. So can you just outline where the, um,
Yeah, so it's, uh,
On, on the property?
Yeah, it's an existing two-car garage. Uh, you know, so that kind of takes care of the two main dwelling units. And then, uh, bumping out the driveway, there would be spacing that we labeled ADU parking, but there would be, uh, parking for, for two, for two cars, uh, for the ADU unit without blocking the garage and without the garage spaces blocking the ADU parking. So a total of four spaces.
Okay, so the sidewalk's gonna basically be in front of that and they'll have to maneuver in?
Exactly. Yep, yep.
And how wide is the, uh, curb cut for the driveway?
It's, I believe, 18 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, the garage is 20. It's a little bit less than the garage. So it's about 18 feet, Mr. Sweeney.
Okay, so, and then you could possibly get two more in front of that two-car garage?
Yeah, I mean, realistically, you would probably only get one, so you don't block the ADU parking.
Well, that's, that's my, yeah, that's my concern because all, you know, two, more often than not, the garage is not used for parking. It's used for storage, uh, in many instances. However, you have it, but, um, that might, might be a factor. I'm not sure if any other members have any other concerns about that, but I can just kinda see it. And once you back it up, it obviously goes back to the street, so.
Yeah, and it, that was one of the discussions that we had, uh, you know, at tech review with, with the planning department. That was really, uh, you know, one of the issues I, I, I think, and I may be wrong, but I think my, my first plan just showed a giant 40-foot curb cut pulling in, so there were no issues. And, and I think Evan brought it up, although it could have been Rob, uh, that there is a zoning bylaw or on the books that, that limits the, the curb cut width. You, you're not supposed to have a, a 24-foot curb cut in Brockton, uh, which is kind of different and maybe should get looked at at some point, because if you have two-car garages, you really want a 24-foot curb cut. But forgetting that, there is a bylaw on the books that limits the, the width of a curb cut. So that's why we uh, showed it as we have it here, Mr. Sweeney, just so it would conform to zoning.
So my question is, so if you, you're limited, so it's basically as you designed that, it would have to move in, in, in the same distance, you know, 18 feet. Could that slide a little bit, so it makes it less of a burden to get into the ADU? Because I'd be willing to bet my life that that garage is gonna be boxed in at some point. And then those two spots that are supposed to be reserved for the ADU, you know, and then everything goes to the street, so then it's pointless.
I know exactly what you're saying. If we, looking at my plan, if we shifted everything down six feet, then, you know, the guy parking over here would just have to do a little wiggle to get in. And then this guy, you know, if we shifted it all down six feet, I think that would satisfy your, your concern, Mr. Sweeney. At least that would, that would give the ADU spaces, you know, kind of a guarantee that they can get to their spaces without being encumbered by the, the garage parking.
I, I mean, I, I would like to see that. And I, as one member, I would like to see that. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we would, we'd be fine if we could condition it that way, I, I think would, would be okay with us.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both. Um, other board members, questions? Okay, open for public? Anyone with their hands raised?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to address the board, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you hover your mouse at the bottom, uh, you'll see that, uh, icon and, uh, we will be able to unlock your microphones. And Madam Chair, at this time, I do not see anyone with, uh, their hand raised.
All right, is there a motion?
So I'm motion to approve with the stipulation that the curb cut be slid down six feet from where it's currently on the plan and with all other standard conditions being met.
Thank you.
Second?
All right, roll call. Yolando?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
All right, Tony, yes. All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you, folks. Have a good night.
Moving on to site plan review, 30 Intervale Street. Do we have a representative from PMP Consulting?
Uh, I'm moving Michelle over. Michael? Being moved over.
Good evening.
Michael, are you there? Oh, there you are.
Yes, yes. The attorney is supposed to also be joining us tonight. I don't know if he's on.
I also see Ed Jacobs. I'm moving him over.
Yeah, bring him over, please.
And I see Attorney McCloskey.
Yes.
I got him.
Got him.
So I'm just gonna open this, um, site plan review to, to start off with. Last month, we continued it. Um, and this month, we're going to hear it. And I just want us to get, all to get on the same page, because there seems to be some conflicting information. Um, is there a, a plan to be put up for us?
Yeah, Sammy, you wanna throw that plan up? Is Sammy on here, uh, Rob? Sammy Crips?
There, Samantha. Okay, hang on just a second. She was slow to raise her hand. Let the record show. But I got her.
All right, so I've had some individual conversations on this and I just want to, um, make sure that everything's discussed here with the planning board members. And we hear the full plan and, um, give the department the opportunity to, to explain what information might be missing and see if the applicant can answer that. Okay? All right, who's gonna present this plan?
Yeah, I'll start off. So this is, um, this is a plan that has been, this property has been, um, approved once before. It is an existing building on site, 30 Intervale Street, the old Sandero Club from back in the day. This, as you can see, the site is completely paved. What we're trying to do here is put in, uh, 22 um, apartments. If you can go to that next sheet, Sammy. The overall size of the building from the original approval hasn't changed. We went for zoning, when we were turned down, uh, we went to the planning. We had 28 apartments at that time. And with only 22 parking spaces, we were turned down, went to planning. Was a significant change in our minds to 22 apartments, because we had 22 parking spaces, required one for each apartment. We were denied to go back into the zoning board. Mr. McCloskey, Attorney McCloskey took over from there. Summary judgment, I believe, and, um, we were allowed to go back to the zoning board. The zoning board approved the plan. From there, we went to conservation commission. We've got conservation approval. And now we're in front of the planning board. Went originally through tech review, um, and now we're front of the planning board with the, with this new plan.
And so the new plan is to construct a 28-unit residential building?
22.
22. All right. Um, so after speaking to the department, uh, Evan, do you have information or any, or Rob, Mr. May, do you have anything that you feel has not been answered by this applicant? You know, two outstanding items I'm aware of is the elevator, which the applicant's not putting in. And then, um, there's a suggestion to change the windows, which it's my understanding, they have made it clear they're, they're not interested in changing the windows due to the cost factor of building this 22 unit.
I think it's all best.
Okay, I understand conservation has cleared everything. Nothing's outstanding with conservation?
That's correct.
And are there any other issues other than the elevator and the windows? Or they're not even issues, but any additional information that the department feels we did not receive?
Attorney McCloskey's trying to speak.
Can't hear you. You might wanna dial in. Marty was having the same issue, Attorney McCloskey.
I'll call him.
But from, um, the department, the planning department.
So I'll, I'll say, um, after they came back from conservation, there was a long list of review comments from the tech review back in January. They went to conservation where they took care of most of them. Uh, there was two that had been unaddressed when they came back to planning board from conservation. One was the elevator. The other was the, uh, external design of the building. They addressed the elevator issue, um. Basically, it's not needed, because, uh, they still meet ADA requirements. So that's fine. That's been addressed. They don't have to do that. Uh, the external design was what was still outstanding. Uh, originally, they asked, they asked for clarification about what uh, was requested. So we sent a whole list of things that we would ideally like to see, um. And then that's kind of as far as it went. Um, we never got anything back from them. I asked them if they were, uh, needed more time, or if they just weren't going to implement the revisions. Uh, and that's kind of where we're still at. And I just want to, again, make clear that we, we're not necessarily requesting that they do all of that stuff, but we are requesting that they talk with us. Because.
Yeah, can you get in on your phone?
I'm gonna mute you real quick, Ed. Um, uh, they, they work with the department. You find something that works for everybody. Uh, it may be true that they can't do all of it for budgetary reasons, but, uh, we would just like to see some explanation of that. Basically, basically, our, our view comment, again, this was given way back in January, uh, a response of, we're just not gonna do it, is not really addressing the comment. They gonna, there has to be a justified reason. Same with the elevator. There was a justified reason why they didn't have to do it. We would like a justified reason why they are not gonna do those. And if, and if they don't have one, let's work together. They must be able to do something. Uh, again, I just wanna remind everyone, this property is located in the, uh, neighborhood, Monte, Montello Neighborhood Plan District that the board, the plan the board adopted a few months ago, uh, is also in the form-based code district that we are currently working on, uh, you know, resoning to form-based code. So we would like to kind of see this, at least work towards that. Now, we understand that there's you know, restrictions on what they can do, but we just really just wanna have them work in good faith with us to figure out what we can do to find a good middle ground that works for everybody. Just kind of saying, we're not gonna do it and we're not gonna discuss it any farther, to me, is not addressing the comment. That's the biggest crux of the, of the issue there.
All right, and also my understanding, the other buildings that are going up, um, there's a specific window design, like similar to what we have downtown Brockton, where all the storefronts are matching. And it, it just, if, it showcases well.
Yeah.
If I could ask, uh, Mr. Jacobs, where?
We'll try to get John, John McCloskey on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We can, we can hear you, but I, I do wanna, before you start, um, if I could just get clarification on the, the windows, it was suggested that they be switched to, um, another design that Matt's gonna match the, uh, neighborhood and what's coming. Is that your understanding of the request from the department?
No. Chair, may I be heard on that?
I just wanted to finish, um, Mr. Jacobs, but sure.
Yeah, so, so Mr. Sears, Mr. Sears is way off, off-base. So this is a site plan approval. Site plan approval is guided by the criteria set forth in our ordinance, the Brockton Ordinance, section 27-89. And I'm, because this has been rather tortuous. And Mr. Sears, as, as many of, some of the board members know, but not everybody, Mr. Sears prevented us from being on the meeting the last time on August 5th. He, he acknowledged that we were there. He told the chair that she could continue the meeting illegally without our permission. And here we are again. Now, he said that we resolved the elevator issue. We didn't resolve the elevator issue. It has nothing to do with site plan approval and Mr. Sears knows that. Mr. May knows that. Also, Brockton doesn't have a design review committee. So windows have nothing to do with site plan approval. This is the second time that this planning, planning department has misguided the board. The last time, they told you we needed hardship to go back to the Board of Appeals. The court in our first meet and greet sent the case back to the Board of Appeals totally without any input from the planning board, because the planning board got it wrong. And in fact, told us to go back without even having to file a, an application fee. So here we are. I'm gonna read you what the sections require for site plan. These are the criteria. Adequacy, adequate capacity of local streets to accommodate traffic to be generated by the proposed use. In addressing the criteria, the planning department, the planning board may consider projections of increased traffic volumes due to proposed development and its impact on existing streets. And the ability of the applicants to mitigate the traffic impacts and the site affected adjacent to the streets and ways. Of course, that's been addressed both at the, at the zoning board and, and in, in this tech review. Number two, adequacy of public infrastructure to service the area and the immediate vicinity of the site. Public infrastructure includes city's water, sewer and public safety protection. Number three, protection of adjoining properties against serious detrimental uses by providing for adequate site drainage, offensive sounds and sites and landscape screening and buffers. Number four, convenience and safety of vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and location of driveways and adjacent streets. Number five, adequacy of parking and loading arrangements. And at number six, adequacy of methods for disposal of water, sewage and refuges and other waste resulting from the permitted use of the site. Site plan approval has zero to do with windows. And your ordinance gives you the guidance on how to proceed in site plan approval. So we, let's stick to that. Mr. Sears is totally wrong, totally off-base and totally misguiding you. And the last time, violated the open meeting law, uh, in, in, preventing us from, from addressing the board.
I'd really like us to try to move forward, um, and I appreciate the information you shared. And I don't feel as if the department's trying to mislead the board with these windows. It was, it's clearly stated, it was a suggestion, um, that they would like to see, you know, typically you all work with us to, to make a few changes based on suggestions from the department. Is, now we're only speaking to the windows. The elevator is no longer issue. There are no other issues or, um, suggestions other than the windows. And can you please address why the suggestion can't be taken? Not saying that you have to. It was a suggestion. And is there a reason why?
So, uh, I was, I was muted, uh, so I'm back. And Mr. Jacobs, I don't, I don't know. I mean, what? You know, this, this, this went before the, the zoning board of appeals. The design went before the zoning board of appeals. I think Mr. Sweeney was on the board that night. That, and, and, uh, the, the plan was approved. The design of the building was approved. The planning department did not raise any objections. And now here we are, a year and a half later, talking about windows. I don't know about windows. All I know is about site plan approval.
So this is part of a larger plan for that neighborhood. And the other buildings coming in are going to have uniform-type windows. Same as you've seen downtown Brockton, which showcases very well. Um, and that was a suggestion by the planning department, a suggestion. Uh, if you can't do it, you can't do it. They were just looking for a reason why. And now I'm curious too, why?
Ed, do you know why we can't, we can't do it? I know that he spent gobs and gobs of money on this project.
Yeah, I think that, I think.
Is, is the suggested window, uh, $100,000 more than the current windows you have? You have?
I think it's just a total change in the design of the building. And that's totally improper.
Okay.
I think it's just a matter of this project has been dragged on for so long for these, these people that bought it. It was tied up in conservation for over a year.
And that's, and that stinks. And I, I, you know, I wish I could make up for it, but, um, so is it true that these windows would have to change the whole design of the building?
Well, I think at one point, we were asked to flip the whole building. So that the windows where that were facing, um, south would be on the north side of the building. And I answered at that time saying that I don't know what that would cost. I don't know if my client would have the money to have the architect redesign the whole building. And that's when I got an, um, email from Evan that was quite threatening saying that, you know, we had 24 hours to come up with a decision, or we were, when, he was not gonna let us speak at the meeting, so.
Again, I'm trying to move this forward. Can we stick to?
I'm just saying, I'm trying to explain to you how we got to where we are.
Yeah, and so I don't, you, you also said that, you know, it's because this plan is dragged out and taken so long. I don't want that to be the reason why you can't do the windows. If you can't, you know, you, you don't have to, but if it's, if it's truly just purely, you have to redesign the whole building, then, you know, here it is.
Going on two years. So they, you know, they're getting drained. So this is, this is not a site, this is not a site plan issue. And, and, you know, I don't wanna have to have the court to do this again.
Attorney McCloskey, yeah, we're, we're not, we're not trying to do. We're not trying to pursue down the wrong path here. I'm trying to move this forward. So I'm asking the other board members if they have questions. I simply tried to get an answer on the windows. I'm hearing that the plan's dragged out for two years and it, it. I guess that's.
I, I, I'm, I'm Stephen Griffin. I'm the architect on the projects from the beginning. Um, so the, the, the essence of this, I'll, I'll try to make a very simple answer to this, is, you know, originally, we designed the building, um, with a sort of modern look to it. Um, and we did at that, at, within the first year of the project, change and add, you know, certain elements such as, um, color, the colors that they, uh, were requested and, um, uh, fascia, um, fascia board, or, or if you wanna call it, uh, you know, an edge at the top, um, that was way more pronounced than we originally did. That had been the design, um, at that point, that was approved. Um, now, since then, nothing else has been done with that, with the design, because we, it was, has been tied up, as, as we've been discussing. Um, but now to go forward and to redesign the building to new, to new zoning codes that weren't in, in effect when we were designing the building originally, will have cost implications to the owner, uh, obviously for my services. So, um, you know, that's, that's, that's reason number one. And then two is, is, again, it's, it had a more modern design. So now we would have to go back and not only change the windows, we would have to affect some of the other elements of the building, um, which then could shift things around. So that's, that's sort of a, a stripped-down version of, I think, what you're trying to get at.
Thank you. That, that was helpful, Mr. Griffin. Um, I believe, uh, James was trying to.
Yeah, uh, thank you. Sure, um. Form-based code is not the standard in that zone today, correct? Uh, could, could maybe Rob help me with? Uh, could could maybe Rob help me with that one?
Yeah, not yet.
Uh, that is that is correct. We have prepared uh a zoning amendment that is in front of uh city council. That amendment would uh not only make residential a a by right use in this district, it would also allow for greater density, less parking, and uh improve flexibility. But it also had a few design standards that um made the neighborhood a little bit more pleasant of a place to live.
Okay. Well, thank you. So going by that, it's not today's standard. So I think it's probably unfair to hold uh the project to a future standard. You know, that being said, I would like to see what your rendering looks like again. If we could revisit what you your current plan is. If you could just kind of walk us through, because I know, you know, what we're debating, but I want I'd like to, you know, you know, walk us through what you've got.
Ed, can you do that? Or Samantha?
Samantha, do you have? Do you have the rendering, um, the the presentation version, which would be has the renderings on it? This is the CD version.
One moment, I'm just trying to locate it.
Yep. Yes, this is the version.
Am I on the correct one, Steve?
Yes, correct. Uh, do you want to go up to the plans first, I guess? Okay. So Mr. Sweeney, what would you like to?
Uh, well, I'm I'm pretty versed in the floor plan in the parking lot area, maybe just the exterior um that may kind of overlap what we're debating here.
And that coloring.
And I, since you have the floor plan up, Madam Chair, can I just, uh, if you look at that first floor?
Okay.
Um, one of the reasons why we had asked for the classroom space to move out to the um street side is on the right hand side, that is where the street is. Those apartments have their windows out onto the street. And it would just be a little bit nicer for those residents not to have to walk and listen to everybody walking up and down the street. They appear to be the same size units as the uh units on the other side. So it might be possible to flip those classrooms in for those apartments. Might.
Might. I guess I guess, but then then it goes to the question, what happens to units on on floor two and floor three, which are in the same location?
But they're up higher, and you don't have somebody right outside your window.
Yeah, well, this the building is not the building is also raised, so you have to go up up three to three and a half feet before. So it's not. It's not an ad grade building.
But that was just a suggestion.
Yep. No, I'm just explaining what it is.
We've all acknowledged.
Yep. And also also flipping it will will require flipping all of the um utilities and stuff which are all um have been designed previously.
Okay, thank you. That's a.
Go back to that previous um slide where the pictures, uh, the buildings are colored.
Keep it. Yeah, that one.
This one. Okay. Um, questions from other board members?
Now, Madam Chair, if I could, I I'm on the phone, so I cannot see. But just answer a couple of questions for me, if you could. This was already approved? This already went to zoning and then back to us again?
Correct.
It was approved by the Board of Appeals.
Zoning only approved.
I'm sorry?
It was approved by the Board of Appeals.
Okay, so the design, what you what I hear you saying, Attorney McCloskey, is if these suggestions were taken to heart, you would have to flip around utilities and a whole lot more a lot a lot more cost to the builder or to the owner.
Oh, and tremendous amount of cost. Yes.
All right. That's that's I don't see a need for. This is my opinion.
Um, other board members.
One I have one more follow up, Madam Chair, if I could. Um, how much space do we have between the sidewalk and the building?
Ed, Ed, can you? I believe it's only a few feet, and that was because we were using the existing footprint.
Okay. Could we get some green in that space that's, you know, human height? You know, six around six feet, five feet, six feet of green in that space?
Between the building and the sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, there's probably about eighteen inches there. We're using the existing foundation that's in the ground. And we're just tearing down the structure and building back on top of the foundation.
Okay. All right. I I think anything you could do would help the street view for sure.
All right, Alondo, anything? Matthew?
No questions.
All right, it's open for public?
Ladies and gentlemen of the public, if you'd like to address the board, um, please use the raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Again, if you'd like to comment on this project to the board, please use the raise your hand, raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. And Madam Chair, I do not see anyone with the raise your hand icon.
All right, so is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, roll call. Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yolando?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right. Thank you, gentlemen. And Samantha?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last but not least, we have ten thirty six Ash Street. Representative ET Engineering.
Azu moving over? Azu, is anyone else with you this evening?
Yes, sir. I am here with our Steve Torry.
Oh, that's Steve Torry.
Yes, the the applicant. Now, uh, good evening, Madam Chair, good evening, Rob, and good evening, Evan, and members of the board.
Good evening, Azu. Nice to see you again.
Well, good to see you. And you know what I said? Better seen than viewed.
All right, we know you love to talk, but remember, sometimes less is more.
Yes. Yes. And so for that, I'm done with my presentation.
All right. Do you have any plans you want to pull up?
Thank you. Uh, let me see if I can share my uh files here, share.
You need Evan or Rob to help you?
Yeah, my screen is frozen. I don't know why.
Either one of you gentlemen help Azu here? By pulling up his plan?
I do not have the plans with me today. I didn't. This is the first meeting and the last one you ever download.
But this is the last meeting? That's right. I should have started with that. Rob?
I was expecting cake, and nobody brought cake, so.
Oh, my goodness, I totally slipped on that. Evan, do you have it or are we gonna win?
Yeah, I can grab it. Just give me a second. I gotta go.
So while we're we're waiting, this is Mr. May's last meeting with us. Um, I've worked with you now, what, seven, eight years being on the board and?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, um a great mentor, and I'm I know I am going to miss you.
Well, it's been an honor working for the city and working with all of you. Your um commitment to Brockton is um uh above uh above the 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 I don't know what the hell I'm trying to say. It's fantastic.
You've done a great job, Rob.
Mr. Torry's construction projects are just incredible. I gotta say that, you know.
Thank you.
Rob, 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 I gotta tell you, uh, it's, uh, I I can't believe we're gonna see the uh the end of a great era. You've uh you've been uh an incredible student of uh Stewart of the championship of this uh planning department. It's been pretty good. I I got, we have not, we have not gotten everything we wanted. Uh, but uh, you guys, you guys have no, no, but you guys have been truly very professional at how you handle our matters. So I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Well, while Evan's trying to pull up the plan, do you want to um?
I believe I have my screen up.
Do you want to just um touch on?
Yeah, Evan's got a screen up.
Well, yeah, hold on. Azu, I think you I think you're sharing Azu. So do you have it or do you still need me to?
Yeah. Yeah, I have it now. Can you see my screen?
Yes, but we just see your folders, not the actual plan yet. I can do it if you want, Azu.
Okay, yeah, yeah, mine is what share us, share yours.
Let me just do it. I got I got you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because I I do have a breakfast meeting tomorrow, so.
So.
Are we invited?
It it the meeting might not be over.
So Azu, why don't you hit us with the highlights of your plan, the overview?
There it is.
Picture overview, please.
Can you see it?
Yes, but you take it away.
Okay, um. So basically, what what we have, one of our chair members of the board is so, uh, Evan, can you zoom in a little bit? Okay, uh, so basically, we have an existing dwelling here. And um and uh we are dividing it into three, into three lots. Each will have more than the requisite one uh thirty thousand square feet. Uh, it's a very natural subdivision. Each will have more than a hundred and uh ten feet of frontage. Uh, we'll meet all the setbacks. We do have the one lines delineated. And all the work can be done outside the hundred foot buffer zone. Uh, we are proposing to uh improve the road to uh the width of our twenty five, twenty four feet with a new water main and a new sewer main. And um and that our basically includes a request for because the frontage it's less than the required one seventy five feet of frontage. Therefore, it's under a subdivision control, or it's called the uh a subdivision with our frontage waiver. And um that is basically your stand of the uh proposed project. Obviously, if we are able to uh secure the approval of this board, uh, we will then have to go to the Board of Appeals for uh frontage of uh variance. Now, with that, Madam Chair, I'm done with my presentation.
All right, thank you. Board members, questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, if you don't mind.
Of course.
Uh, my question is with the traffic. So we all know West Chestnut Street is uh has its troubles. So West Chestnut, Linwood, West Chestnut, Ash, West Chestnut, Southworth, they all need a light to slow the traffic down, push it back where it belongs, more of it on Belmont Street. That being said, a lot of the traffic coming in, it's a first of all, it's a very narrow street to enter. You you want most people in the city, I bet, don't even know there's a street there. So the awareness level of that street is I just want to put this out there because it's gonna be an issue sooner or later. And and when you start to add more traffic, I'd like to know, and I I understand it's a private way. However, what are we doing in terms of uh improving this private way?
Okay, so if you uh, Evan, if you can go to my next about details. We are improving this uh to a twenty four foot wide pavement. Uh, we will have a stop sign uh at intersection of uh Ash Street and West Chestnut. So the uh the width, the proposed improvement, uh improved width will be very adequate. And the houses, the new houses will be set back um from from West Chestnut Street more than now two hundred feet. So you have a good queuing uh distance for traffic entering uh West Chestnut from this Ash Street. So the proposed improvements, uh, will uh improve the traffic flow in uh on that road. And then uh I don't I don't anticipate uh three new homes. Uh, even with the idea of a two point five uh vehicles per home, uh, you're talking at the most nine vehicles. And uh even if you allow those nine to be entering and exiting, you're just adding nine nine ve- nine vehicles into the traffic stream. So with the proposed improvement, uh, and we also uh by virtue of doing this, we will be providing uh uh fire hydrants for fire protection for both there were the proposed.
Azu, if I could just interrupt back to the traffic. So when you're widening the the road, is it gonna match uh Ash Street on the other side as far as width?
Oh, no, no, Ash Street is almost thirty feet wide.
Okay, and you're gonna your proposal is to widen it to what?
Uh, from twelve feet to twenty four.
Okay, from twelve to twenty four.
Yes, sir.
That's the maximum.
And as far as the brush in the trees that surround that intersection, is that all gonna be cut back for visibility?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and and to what extent?
Oh, wow. So the the uh height uh distance of uh is so uh three point seven five feet above our pavement level. So anything that uh anything above three point uh three point five feet will be trimmed off.
Three point five feet off the street?
Above the pavement. That's correct.
Of the pavement. Okay.
Yes.
Uh, because visibility coming out of that street is not so great either. Um, that's that's my concern for right now. I mean, the lots, you know, really don't. Yeah, I have no question on the lots. It's really just the traffic and that it's a troubled intersection. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other board members?
Uh, Madam Chair, I just have a question. Um, if there is gonna be any pedestrian access, if there's gonna be any sidewalks I'm added?
Uh, uh, no, because the right of uh the uh the width of the road does not have room for that. But it's a uh it's a very uh limited uh development in the in the on that street. So you don't have a true traffic. So uh we're going uh going through Ash Street uh extension. So there there will not be any need uh for that.
Well. Is there a is there any improvement that you could do on West Chestnut in case anybody is walking, you know, back to their uh houses or trying to access um because people do walk up and down West Chestnut. Um, and it is, there is a lot of challenges there, and there's a lot of uh traffic. So um I know I I don't know if there is anything that's located at the intersection of Ash and um West Chestnut. I know that students walk to school to the Kennedy in that area.
Yeah, I think that's a valid uh comment. Uh, we we should be able to take a look at uh Ash, Ash, excuse me, West Chestnut. And being a public way, we will have to uh gain our approval from the DPW to make any improvements um on West Chestnut. We can't just go ahead and do it. But I'm uh when we when we have a conversation with them, I think we can accommodate any intersection improvement that would be necessary to improve that accessibility.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, do you want to follow up?
I see your hand up. Deputy Chief Weeks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, I have a question. The, um, the furthest back or the deepest, um, proposed house, what's the distance of that off of, uh, West Chestnut?
Well, that would be, uh, three hundred and twenty-five feet.
Three twenty-five? So that, alright, so the farthest back house is three twenty-five?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, one last one here. So an issue that we see, can you back up so we could see the intersection on that plan?
Is that good right here?
Yeah, I think to the top, uh, oh, it's, okay.
No, that's, right here.
That's fine. Yep, that's, that's fine. So what we usually see is traffic, so, so say there's a car coming into the city. We'll see a car in the middle of that intersection, then we'll see all the other traffic go around that. And essentially, right where the entrance of that, of the extension is. So, you know, having something there to prevent cars, you know, the added flow, yeah, I know what you said, nine cars, Azu, but family, friends and all that, and have more people over, you have a brand new house. It's gonna end up more than nine cars. It's gonna be a little bit more traffic than there was there before. So, I mean, I would, I don't, I don't know if we could stipulate this here or maybe ask and find out, but at least curbing on the edge of that street, which would keep cars from going over the shoulder and into the grass, uh, will keep the traffic flow from go- from doing that so that you can at least see that there's a car coming out and that you, there's not already a car, um, you know, essentially in, on the tip of the street.
Yes. No, I, I would, I, I think, uh, that is, uh, something that we, as I stated, uh, uh, Mr. Sweeney, uh, a couple minutes ago, we will have a, you can, that can be stipulated. And then we will have a conversation with the DPW and, uh, to allow that work to be done. I don't see an issue with that.
I would feel much more comfortable as a physical barrier there, uh, to at least mitigate what, what's foreseeable.
Yep. Well, that's valid and I don't see, and I don't see an issue with that.
All right. Thank you. Opening up to public if, unless, uh, board members have.
Ladies and gentlemen, anyone who would like to speak on this subdivision, please raise your hand. And I do have one person that I am opening your microphone and Veronica, you should be live.
Well, I hope so. Mr. First and foremost, Mr. May, it's been wonderful. I'm sorry to see you go. I really am. I hope whatever it is you endeavor to do is better and more pleasing to you and your family.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Absolutely. As for this plan, I'd like, I have a question regarding the Tropello Road that's not constructed yet. Where does that go? Is that something someone knows?
Tropello Road?
I, I maybe I'm mispronouncing the name. It's a cross from the third house that, uh, lot that you're proposing. It says not constructed yet. If you put the plan back up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's a.
Evan, do you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me grab this back up again. Can you guys see this now? Can you guys see my cursor?
We see double click.
I'm up in a second.
It's up now.
Oh, oh, oh. Alright. Can you guys see my cursor?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, right here, see, it's a, it's a, there's a road that starts on the, uh, the other neighborhood and the right of way extends all the way to Ash Street, although this portion of it, uh, is not construction, constructed. I think there's actually a garage or something built right in the middle of it.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming that's what you're talking about, Veronica?
It is. Cause I, I'm not familiar with it, but I was trying to figure out, does it actually go to neighborhood that's active? And what you're saying is it does. It goes into the other neighborhood. Um, which I think is something that with the traffic study that you're, you're doing or you're proposing or you're making contingent should be noted. Because if this becomes a throughway for other traffic, it may come through to that Ash Street. And that Ash Street intersection is notoriously a high danger zone. Partly because you can't see traffic coming at you, coming into town. You can't see the traffic coming out of town because of the, the topography of the hill, the incline. So I, you know, West Chestnut's going to be developed a lot more. And I'm sure that the planning department, even without Mr. May, is going to highlight the dangers that are here. And I think that, you know, a traffic light has been required for that intersection for a long time. I think this may be the proposal that needs to push it through. Because coming off of Ash Street from the s- school is dangerous at any time. So I, I like the idea that people are getting to use their property. I like the idea that they're gonna have a, an opportunity to build out of the wetlands completely and access their. I just think that the traffic light needs to be installed. I don't, I don't know how much of the turning lane or a buffer for the curb is going to suffice. Because I can be sitting in traffic, waiting to come through that intersection into town, cause I live down this way. And people whip around me on the right-hand side because I don't feel comfortable going up on other people's lawns, but they do it. And I think that a three-foot hedge at that, at that intersection isn't gonna help the situation. Cause you won't be able to see people coming up the hill.
Okay. Thank you, Veronica, the, the, your suggestion.
I appreciate it. Again, thank you, everybody. Goodbye, Mr. May. Hope it's the best, best of the future to you.
Thank you. Anyone else have their hand raised? Rob?
Hmm, no one else has their hand raised.
Okay. So before we proceed with the motion, and if there is a motion to approve, then, um, you heard Azu say that he would have to, is it with DOT you'd have to meet with for?
No, no, the city's DPW.
Oh, city's DPW.
Yeah, yeah, they, they, that's, that's who owns the, uh, who's at, uh, West Chestnut Street. And I'm, and I'm not that familiar with the, uh, traffic light, but I mean, this, if this, what we're proposing does not merit, uh, uh, warrants, the, uh, the warrants for traffic lights. So I'm not sure. And, uh, that paper street, uh, has been, we showed that because it's part of record, but that's been in, in, in folded into that property that's there. So you're gonna have to raid somebody's garage to do that. But anyway. Uh, I think, uh, a curbing, uh, um, an eighteen-inch curb at that intersection, uh, which the city actually has a typical detail for, will provide that, uh, uh, I don't think anyone will be driving a car over a curb.
If a, if a board member's gonna motion us to approve, I would, um, like to suggest that a stipulation be put in place that the applicant meets with the DPW for a safety plan, um, that the DPW agrees with for that corner.
Ma- Madam Chair, if I could, could we continue this until we get a definitive plan? I mean, to approve it and push it through without a definitive plan only puts us a little bit more behind, in my opinion. And I think this is a really important, uh, point on this. And if the DPW says no, that's nothing in the budget, you know, what do we do?
Well, it will not be a budget. Uh, we will not be, uh, they will not be spending the money. The applicant will pay for it. So, so.
I think, I think we do have to outline how much, how much curbing would we go down? Cause greater rock isn't that cheap. So how much would you do? How far back would it go into the street?
Well, I was suggesting that the DPW dictate that, you know, if they're.
Could I speak to that?
Madam Chair, uh, Mr. Torrey would like to, uh, add his own comments.
Okay, hold on, cause we're talking over one another. So please, can I get hold of this meeting? So the stipulation would be that the DPW would be the folks to, uh, review the plan and be in agreement that it's, it's improving safety on that corner, whether it's the curbing. Um, they are the experts. So I'd like to have them, their involvement in this. Specifically to what you were mentioning to, um, Jim, so you could add that in the stipulation.
Okay, I'm just trying to determine if, you know, what, what they would say and what would be acceptable, you know, from us.
Um, and at the cost of the applicant, not, uh, the city.
Yeah. And if I could, if I could.
Who wants to speak?
Uh, Steve Torrey, you still with me?
Hello. How are you doing tonight? The, uh, just, you know, the cost factor shouldn't enter into the decision-making, but from a business point of view, it always does. And when I looked at this project, I looked at it just like, uh, every other thing I've done in the city is, how can I make it as good as I can and still be able to afford to do the project? And where I decided to spend the money was into the road improvement for a number of reasons, e- reasons. And that includes, uh, the visibility and, and the entrance to that area. Uh, clearing that as much as possible and widening that road out from twelve to twenty-four, twenty-two feet is a major, major expense, but it gives the, the emergency vehicles access to the, to, to that area. Right now, you, one car can't even pass another. You can't get a fire truck down there. There are no, there are no fire hydrants there. Um, I voluntarily, as part of the proposal, uh, we're, uh, gonna bring a six-inch line down, water line down. We add two hydrants, uh, to the street, which has no hydrants, no fire service at all right now. And the total cost of that is in excess of eight hundred thousand dollars. Not for building the houses, not for anything else, but just the cost to improve that as much as I think that it reasonably can be done. Um, and that's, that's for the betterment of both the traffic on West Chestnut Street and, and the ease of access for emergency vehicles and the current people who live on that street. And it will be nice. Uh, it'll widen that out to where the original stone walls are on either side of it, which is the maximum that the, uh, right, the right of way allows it to be widened. Uh, I've gotta take some huge, huge trees that are in that down, that are, that are in that travel way now that have grown over the years. And if, if, if you want to make, uh, you know, part of the approval that, that traffic lights and, and a major intersection improvements have to be made. It's just not gonna be, it's not gonna be financially feasible.
I wasn't, I wasn't thinking that and, uh, though I, you know, respect what Veronica had to say, but that, it, that, I say, cross that bridge when we get there, when that next road's gonna be opened up. But for now, that's, that's street light. It's not what I was thinking about or what Mr. Sweeney was mentioning. Or, um, Yolando, just some, um, curbing in a small sidewalk or something, um, in the best interest for safety, public safety.
Um, yes.
Okay.
I under- I understand. I mean, I, again, the only way it would make sense to me, I would gladly do that. But I would have to, I'd have to reduce the cost somewhere else to make it financially feasible. So.
Well, maybe we should, um, um, continue this.
I would, I would suggest, Madam Chair, that if they could meet with DPW to come up with a, a plan that's feasible and for safety, considering it is one of our most dangerous intersections, and we have a lot of them. But many residents would point to this one too, that's on the side of the city. Um, that, that would be what I would be in favor for, just to get a sharpened up plan. Well, the city on the same page as the developer, if we can have a more accurate snapshot here.
So Mr. Torrey, would you like to do that, um, for us to take a, a vote on continuing this? So you have time to talk to DPW for us, little, not asking you to spend a whole lot more money, um, just some short change to help with some public safety for that corner, please.
I, I just wanna, I just wanna, uh, 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 I mean, I saw the, earlier, uh, you've done this before, condition projects, and, uh, we have met those conditions, every one of them. Uh, and I think, uh, I, I share these sentiments, uh, with, uh, well, without, without a shadow of doubt, shout, I share Mr. Sweeney's sentiments, that I think, uh, DPW is the, if, if, if you make it a condition that we must meet with the DPW and that DPW will approve all the improvements for traffic, uh, uh, they will do that. They're not gonna ignore that. And, uh, and, uh, Mr. Torrey has got a timeline that he has to function with, within. While he's doing that with DPW, he needs to start the process with the, uh, with, with the, uh, uh, Board of Appeals for the frontage.
Hearing you, you don't, I'm hearing you, you don't wish to, um.
That's, that's, that's the word, scheduling.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, with this condition, that, uh, the developer meets with the DPW in order to determine the best course of action for the structure of that intersection.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right. Roll call, Yolando.
Uh, yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Tony? Yes. Alright, so now we're off to these requested waivers. Um, there's a lot of them. Do we do them individually or read them all off?
If you think you are going to approve all of the waivers, you could vote out as a package.
Madam Chair, I would like to hear what we're, what we're waiving.
Well, I mean, um, I've read them, um.
So there's a lot frontage waiver.
Okay, so let's start with the first one. Lots one to three, frontage. I thought we had enough frontage for all these.
We have enough square footage.
Twenty-two to one fifty.
Yeah.
Um, is there a motion on the first waiver, frontage lots one through three?
Motion to approve lot frontage waiver.
Okay, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Yes. Second one, street and roadway. Can you elaborate on that, Azu?
Okay, so because it's an existing road, we don't have, we're not actually proposing a new, on, say like the subdivision we did on Cypress, uh, uh, Drive, where we actually created a new roadway with a cul-de-sac. Well, we're not proposing a cul-de-sac here because it's an existing road, so.
So why doesn't, why doesn't it say, read that then, not proposing a, no, no cul-de-sac?
Well, because, uh, under your, that's, that's what it's in, encompassed in that design standard.
Okay, so understanding the second waiver is to not build a cul-de-sac. Is there a motion?
Yes, I make that motion.
There's a second. Okay, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony? Yes. Alright, the next one, utilities, street water main.
We're proposing, uh, we're proposing a water main. So the, the, the regulation, they say, they have to have a separate plant for, for utilities, a separate plant. If you look at it, Evan, if you can, uh, highlight that, uh, um, share that file again to show that we actually proposing, uh, um, yeah, if you, if you zoom in.
The blue, right?
Yes, sir. And as well, yes, along with the hydrants that we're proposing.
We're required to pre- present a separate plan. So what exactly is this waiver speaking to?
Well, so, so, so if you look in your rules and regulations, you need a separate utility plan. A separate plan and profile plan. That's basically, we are asking for, we're, for that so that we're not creating an unnecessary number of sheets. The reason for those requirements is when you're proposing a brand-new roadway with that cul-de-sac, they have to show a plan and profile. You have to show, you have to show a separate plan for water and sewer. So we're seeing, we wanna show every time on one plan. That's all.
So you wanna tie into the street water main?
Oh, yeah, we are tying into, uh, 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 water on, on the West Chestnut. And then we're bringing in, we're bringing in a six-inch main to support the new hydrants that we're proposing.
It exists, it just.
Any other questions around that waiver? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Next one, street lighting.
We are, we're not proposing any street lighting for the simple reason that we don't wanna, uh, we wanna make this only residents only. So that we don't have people coming in there packing and at night, um, and making it a, uh, a busy road. And, uh, actually that, that addresses some of those issues of traffic at night. We don't have people, cause it's a dead end on the other end, yeah, we're trying to make it as private route, as a quiet road as possible.
For safety, we, we need street lighting, whether they're walking their dogs or a car does turn down there accidentally needs to turn around, um.
Even the traffic coming out of the street, I mean, that's kind of dangerous intersection.
Hmm. Is there a motion? There a motion to approve or deny?
Motion to deny.
Second.
I second that.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Yes to deny. Matthew?
Yes to deny.
James?
Yes, deny.
Marty?
Yes, deny.
Tony, yes denied. Next one, curbs and sidewalks. I feel like this one goes hand in hand with what you're going to be meeting with the DPW.
Right, right.
So, um.
So we, we, uh, I don't have ability to write right now. We will withdraw that, uh, we will withdraw that, uh.
Is there a motion to?
For, for curbing, only, only wait for sidewalk, because we don't have the right of way for sidewalk. So we've for, uh, sidewalk, but not for curbing.
Uh, Ma- Madam Chair, could we, could we possibly waive this after or at, once we see the determination from DPW?
Well, we're not going to see one. They're going to do the approval without us. But, um, we could put in a condition that if this is waived, it has to be, it has to be looped into the approval with the DPW.
Madam Chair, are they saying that they're not putting curbs and sidewalks?
Well, they weren't going to, but now the plan, um, previous, this plan itself has, um, been approved with the standard condition, or the condition that they work with the DPW for the curves and sidewalks and safety. So, um, is there a motion to add this waiver into the DPW?
I'll motion, I'll motion to approve with the stipulation that any determination from the DPW at the end of the street that impacts traffic safety between the intersections of this street and West Chestnut. Uh, any suggestions from them, uh, must, must be adhered to.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Right, um, roll call, Yolando?
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
Marty?
Yep.
James?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, you got all that, Evan? Next one, monuments. Do you mean like no monuments at the end of the street?
I think we missed one, Madam Chair.
Oh, street trees.
Street tree.
No, bro.
Thank you. So street cheese, you're not gonna put any street trees?
We got, we got plain dog trees. We got plain dog trees.
Yep, you're correct. Is there a motion?
Second.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Um, so is my understanding for the monuments, you're not, it'd be obstruction for view? So you don't wanna put monuments along the streetway?
No, other than, uh, what you did, uh, yes, that's correct. Other than to layer the street, no other monuments. Other than what we necessary to layer the street.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. Um, the next one, street names and signs. I mean, you're gonna have a, a street sign up.
Right, right, it's, 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 well, it.
A waiver to a street, street name?
Because we're, like I said earlier, Mr. Madam Chair, we are not proposing any roadway. So it's basically the same set of waivers that I requested on the other one. It basically just two colors and put it in here. Uh, Ash Street is existing, uh, was street. So, uh, uh, that, that's only to waive that. So you can deny that.
I, Madam Chair, I just, I think having a street sign up lets you know the traffic may be approaching, that it is a street. Again, for safety and you could also have that end at the end of the street. I understand you don't want traffic, uh, but you could put private way, dead end.
Yeah.
People will know.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
People will know the traffic may be coming out of there. At least you're giving the traffic, one of our busiest, busiest arteries a heads up.
No, uh, well, there's no prob, no problem denying that. Uh, well, like I said, was it just, there were a carryover from another job that you, that we had done.
Motion to deny.
All right, motion to deny.
All right, um, gonna go with roll call, but I feel like it's needed. It's, we need some type of stipulation that you are gonna put a street sign up and maybe, and a dead end sign to keep oncoming traffic. Okay, um, roll call, Yolando.
Yes on denial?
Matthew?
Yes to deny.
James?
Yes, deny.
Marty?
Yes, deny.
Tony, yes to deny. Um, maintenance of roadways and utilities. Who do you, who's supposed to take care of the roadway and utilities?
Madam Chair, can I just ask, is this gonna remain a private way?
Well, the dead end.
Yeah.
If, if it's a private way, the city's not responsible.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I have one quick question on that. Who would be responsible for the maintenance?
The property owners.
The property owners.
So why do you have, why you asking for a waiver if you're responsible for it?
Uh, because, uh, because you, you, we need, we need your approval for subdivision.
All right, so you're asking for us to, um, assign the responsibilities to the owner for maintenance and roadway, but maintenance of roadways and utilities. Okay, is there a motion?
I make the motion.
Owner responsibility for the roadways and utilities.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Uh, yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Yes. All right, thank you for that. Um, fire.
It's just, Madam Chair, can we just clarify that that, that yes, that I just gave was to make sure that the maintenance was to be done by the homeowners?
Evan, you heard, you heard me clearly say that we are assigning the owner responsibility for the roadway and utilities? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, 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 we're good. Thank you for the clarification.
The owners, the own, the owners of those properties would have to come to the city to get that street accepted as a city street. Which probably wouldn't be a big deal at all.
They, they're already responsible for it because the road already exists. So it's not, it just won't be changing anything.
Fire department, what is this asking? What's this waiver for?
Well, for the, uh, uh, call boxes, uh, uh.
I'm sorry?
We're not proposing any new road, we're not proposing any new roadway. So I don't see any reason for us to start installing remote, remote calling for called boxes.
Right. But you have a fire hydrant.
No, we have two fire hydrants.
All right, is there a motion?
We have two fire hydrants.
Motion to, second.
All right, roll call, Yolando.
Yes.
Matthew?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
Tony, yes. All right, we made it through that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Sherry. Sherry.
Rob, sorry to see you.
Rob, where, where is the breakfast? I can come and have some bacon.
Do you, uh, as, uh, Mr. Tori, do you have a surety for Evan?
Yes, we will deliver that to him.
Okay.
Cause, like, cause once the appeal, appeal period runs out, then he's gonna come and sign a covenant.
All right, Mr. May, I'm gonna let you sign, close out this meeting, your last meeting. What's your final words for us?
Meeting adjourned. No, um, it is honor serving with the city of Brockton. Um, I've enjoyed working with its residents, property owners, business leaders, uh, elected officials, community leaders. Uh, I think we've done a lot of work. There's still stuff to be done. Um, and I've got a, a big list that I've left on the refrigerator for Evan and the team. So, um, uh, I, I only expect good things going forward. So thank you all for your time and patience and, um, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Good luck.
Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
Good luck.
Uh, thanks, Bob. Thank you, board, and have a good night.
Motion adjourned.
This will adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, goodbye.